So was there always a woodwork practice? Or did you use a woodwork?
Oh, it's always.
Yeah.
So we need to move over.
Do you guys need some signs?
No, I don't think so.
I didn't know. I thought he built a fire.
So that's why he stopped smoking.
Fine with me. Good not careless. It would be completely impossible for me to care.
You ever change your bed since the last time you, last year when you talked good English? That same stuff.
I would, damn it. Oh.
I've done a lot of things. I've been in corporate jets. I've been in helicopter from the hospital. It wasn't because of you.
Greenwald, here. Hunt, here. Roden, here.
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 Election of the President is your nomination.
And I'm the Dr. Roden.
My second.
Any audience discussion?
Andrea, you want a bag?
It's all yours, Bob. We're good.
Greenwald?
Yes.
Stroya?
Yes.
Zarco?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
And who'd I miss?
Roden.
Yes.
Okay, just where you at, sir? Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you perform faithfully the duties of your office as President and Board of Education of the North Canton City School District? There.
Any nomination for Vice President?
And I'm Jessica.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Greenwald?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Zarco?
Yes.
And Stroya?
Yes.
Jessica, your turn. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will perform faithfully the duties of your office as Vice President of the Board of Education of the North Canton City School District? If no, please say I will.
I will.
Congratulations.
Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda of the organizational meeting?
Someone? Second.
Roll call.
Zarco?
Yes.
Stroya?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Greenwald?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Meeting dates for 20 through 2023. It's been discussed that we possibly could move to the third Wednesday instead of the second Wednesday. Is that okay with everybody?
It's fine with me. It's 5:30.
5:30. All right, that's what my suggestion is.
Sure, that's right.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we're talking the third Wednesday?
Third Wednesday at 5:30.
5:30. Here's the media center.
Correct. That's back to where we were for years and years.
Yeah.
That helps us in August, especially with staffing and so a couple other dates. But yeah.
And how long do we have that requirement of travel? So we'll be good.
Someone?
Second.
Roll call.
Greenwald?
Yes.
Zarco?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Stroya?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Author Jason treasure.
Yes, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the standing resolutions for 2023 to authorize, you see those eight items, to authorize the treasurer to operate the district. I'm not going to read every one of them, but they're there. And basically operate the district as a, as a treasurer.
You can give it up. No motion?
Someone?
Second.
Any discussion?
You can do a great job.
Very much.
I would say so. Roll call.
Stroya?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Greenwald?
Yes.
Zarco?
Yes.
Thank you. I should note for both the superintendent and the upcoming, or the treasurer and the upcoming superintendent, there was no changes for this past year or so, just for your review. And it's also recommended in this section that the Board of Education approve the standing resolutions for 23 to designate superintendent and also to authorize the superintendent for those items listed A through I.
Motion, please.
Someone?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Zarco?
Yes.
Greenwald?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Stroya?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item under number four, it's recommended the Board consider membership to the Ohio School Boards Association and that renewal for 23.
Can we take four and five together?
We could do a consensus for four, five together. And also number five would be the recommendation to, membership to the Ohio High School Athletic Association renewed for the 23-24 school year. So for your consideration, OSBA for 2023 and the Ohio High School Athletic Association for 23-24 school year.
Is there a motion?
Someone? Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Stroya?
Yes.
Zarco?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Greenwald?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Would I just like, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, under the legislative, appointment of legislative and student achievement liaisons, it's recommended that these two be filled, both as a appointee and a alternate. And I believe last year we had Jessica and on the legislative, and I think Andrea, you were alternate maybe?
Okay.
I don't know. Is that what it was last year?
I think so.
Would anybody else like to serve as alternate?
Nope.
Okay, all right. And I assume Jessica?
Yeah.
Okay. And then also for the student liaison, a appointee and an alternate for that as well.
Does anybody want the student liaison?
Nope.
I'll take that one. Alter.
So Dr. Roden. So for your consideration then, remember Stroya as the appointee is the legislative liaison with an alternate as Andrea Zarco, and for the student achievement liaison, Dr. Roden, and an alternate as Mr. Hunt. Sound good?
A little motion?
Someone? Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Stroya?
Yes.
Zarco?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Greenwald?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on seven is the Legal Assistant Fund. It's recommended that the participation with the Ohio School Board's Legal Assistant Fund be continued, then authorize the treasurer to enter the contract pursuant to revised code at the cost of $250.
Do we have a motion?
Someone?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Greenwald?
Yes.
Stroya?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Zarco?
Yes.
Thank you. Under item eight, it's recommend the Board employ or retain legal counsel from the listed firms at the request of the Board President or Superintendent or Treasurer as needed, in addition to counsel appointed by statute, and then the treasurer be authorized to pay fees, service fees, at the usual and customary rates for those listed below.
Someone?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Zarco?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Stroya?
Yes.
Greenwald?
Yes.
Thank you. And finally, I have a nine in this section. The subcommittees, where you see them listed for this past school week, this past calendar year, and discussion for those next year. This coming.
Are they okay?
Yep.
Motion?
Someone?
You okay, Andrea?
Yeah, yeah. No, I was just gonna, I didn't know if we said we were just keeping it the same. You said that.
I think that's, that's okay with us.
Yes, yes.
Greenwald?
Yeah. I made, I made the motion.
Yeah, I need a second.
Second.
Greenwald?
Yes.
Zarco?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Stroya?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn the organizational.
Thank you.
Someone?
Second.
Greenwald?
Yes.
Stroya?
Yes.
Zarco?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
And Hunt?
Yes.
All right. All right. Moving on to the regular meeting. Roll call.
Roden?
Yes.
Stroya?
Yes.
Greenwald?
I'm sorry.
Yes. Hunt?
Yes.
Zarco?
Here.
Oh, we're doing here's and not yeses.
Yes.
I'm so used to yeses.
Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Someone?
Second.
Roll call.
Stroya?
Yes.
Greenwald?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Zarco?
Yes.
Is there a presentation?
There's not a formal presentation, no paper certificate. It's just a simple thank you to our board for your service, to our kids and our staff and our community for your service and past presidency for several years. And we thank you for, for your service and your leadership. And it's a great place for kids and it's your fault. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I think it's a fault of a lot of us around here.
Yes, but.
I, I do want to, to offer a really strong note of appreciation to Andrea for her leadership. Strong leadership over the last two years. You had good and bad times and, you know, challenges and you kept us on the right path. And I really appreciate your leadership. Thank you so much.
It takes some work, so thank you, but thank you.
Do we have any? Yes, we do, guys. Jill Camp would like to talk to us.
I would like to talk to you about Portage School tonight. And I have a brief statement that I'm gonna read. I would like to start with a brief history lesson. The site where Portage School was located has been the location of New Berlin North Canton School since 1835. The current northeast wing sits on a portion of the 1888 Foundation. That's the area where the Heritage Society is located presently. North Canton grew quite rapidly, due in part to the Hoover Company, by the late 19-teens. The fifth and sixth grade attended school above the drugstore because the 1888 building was so overcrowded. The 12th grade also attended McKinley High School and ordered to graduate. My grandfather and his siblings were among those that had traveled to Canton. In 1919, St. Paul's School opened, and even though that drew 100 students from public school enrollment, it was not enough to alleviate the overcrowding. In 1920, a portion of the 1888 building was demolished, and the building that faces Portage Street was added on to that remaining 1888 structure. That new portion consisted of 10 classrooms. In 1924, the northwest wing was added, which included another six classrooms, the kitchen, and the gym cafeteria auditorium. This was the only school building in North Canton until 1929, when the Charlotte Street Building was built and became a high school. It wasn't until the 1950s that Orchard Hill and Thermont were built, and then 1970s for Northwood. Portage has a rich history and played a huge part in the development of North Canton. In 1940, 84 British children were brought to North Canton by Boss Hoover and a committee of residents to protect them from the nightly bombing over England during World War II. They lived here for five years with North Canton Coast families, who treated them like their own children. All 84 of those children attended school at Portage. Portage is one of the few historical buildings left in North Canton, the others being the Hoover Company and St. Paul's, and a very small portion on Main Street where the Halloween Burger Restaurant is currently located. I have been told that you indicated we should have done this a couple of years ago, but I also know there was a group that was objecting to building on this site at that time. It was a questionable decision, given there's more acreage at Northwood. I contend that the 36-year bond will not even be paid off before you want to build another building and move everything onto one campus. And now in these horrible economic times, you also want to tear down the 1957 building where the middle school is currently located. How much do you think North Canton residents and the residents of the state can handle? And why couldn't that 1957 building have been used for elementary instead of spending money on new? Before you say I don't have a stake in this, you are using state tax dollars as well as North Canton property tax dollars. I'm also interested because this is where I grew up and where I went to school, as did my mother, grandfather, and many extended family members. It's my hometown. We have petitions here showing how many residents that disagree with what you're doing. While it may not seem like enough for you to pay attention, you do need to know that I got 300 signatures in four hours at Oktoberfest. That's indicative of the feeling of the citizens of North Canton. The majority opinion is that we are tearing down too many old buildings, and that particularly since this building is on the Historic Register now, it needs to be protected. Many individuals made the comment they have always supported school buildings, but they never will again if this building is demolished. You need to rethink this. When I submitted the application for the Historic Register, I was on the fences to whether or not to include the 1952 annex. Architecturally, it does not have the significance of the 1888, 1920, 1924 building, but it is connected via the brick-colored walkway. The general consensus is that people are not going to be upset, as upset, if you tear down it, but that the 1888, 1920, 1924 building needs to be spared. I have a few things that I want to submit for the record. One is a copy of my comments. Another is an article that was in our local Lorraine Medina County Rural Co-op for Electricity. The shoe at 100 years old. For any of you Ohio State fans, that stadium was built in 1922, and they still are using it and they're still proud of it. That's only two years after the main portion of the Portage Street building was built. I also have a copy of the letter that was sent to Bob Roden from the Ohio History Connection. And I got, oops, and I have a copy of my application for the National Register.
Thank you.
Who should I give all these to? To you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm a teacher.
I'm a teacher, so I think you're gonna be able to hear me. I have a teacher.
Are you sure?
I think so.
Well, just, just in case.
Okay.
We'll help you out.
Thank you. I too am here to save the Portage Street building. And as a point of interest, I want to put the show hands. How many of you board members attended an elementary school here in North Canton? Elementary school. Very good. So you three should have some concept as to the significance of the history of our elementary buildings. So the rest of you that did not attend any North Canton schools, listen up. I'm going to read a pamphlet from the Muskingham River watershed about the National Register of Historic Places. The National Register of Historic Places is the nation's official list of cultural resources worthy of preservation, and properties listed in the register include districts, sites, buildings, structures, and objects that are significant in American history, architecture, archaeology, engineering, and culture. Now, North Canton has such a building. I also have a letter from the State Historic Preservation Office that states, and I quote, "We strongly encourage owners of historic properties to consider all options before completing work that could damage the structure or impair its historic integrity." Now, if North Canton has such a building, then why is the Board of Education so intent on tearing that building down? Not only will Portage School be destroyed, but you'll be destroying the history of some of North Canton's finest history, the history that is written in the walls of that school. As Jill mentioned, the evacuee program of the children from England during World War II, Boss Hoover and his family attending Portage Street, plus the fact that all children in North Canton had to attend either Portage Street or St. Paul's School until Orchard Hill opened in 1956. All the people who signed these petitions because they agreed that Portage Street should be saved are going to be the same people that you expect to support future bond issues or levers. Well, it's time you start listening to the citizens of North Canton, who you are to represent. How far behind the completion of the two new schools now under construction and a possible new middle school will come the need for an operating levy and more tax dollars. North Canton is not Jackson Township, and we cannot compete with them, nor should we. I ask that you seriously consider, reconsider the demolition of Portage Street School. And I have a letter written by Paul Keever. I hope I still have time to read it. Dear North Canton Board members, I wanted to express my personal feelings as well as support for others who are interested in preserving the old portion of the Portage building. As some of you may know, I spent 31 years teaching social studies for the North Canton Schools. Career-wise, those were truly the best years of my life. The students, staff, board members, and parents could not have been more supportive. Due to some health issues, I'm not able to address the board personally. So I am putting my thoughts in this letter, hoping that you will consider saving this historic building. I certainly support the wonder, the wonderful building projects that are currently being constructed for our North Canton students. These will serve our youth far into the future. But sometimes, we must not dismiss the past. The old Portage building is a reminder of what parents and board members did years ago to enhance the education for their children. The old portion of the building could still be used for a senior center that could save, that could serve the older members of our community. There are still numerous North Canton residents that hold fond memories of their days at Portage School, who would make use of the building if proper programming would be arranged. Hopefully, some consideration can be given to the preservation of Portage School. Sincerely, Paul Keever. And I also have some things that I would give Mr. Roden.
Thank you, Bonnie.
There's a copy of Paul's letter.
Did she not give me that? No, I guess I leave my with that, yes.
That I can introduce. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rosbord?
Thanks for raising the mic.
Yes, I want to make sure.
Chukas 1307 February Street, southeast, North Canton, Ohio. The choice to build an elementary school for nearly 1,000 children at the industrial-contaminated 9.6-acre Charlotte Street location continues to be shown to be an extremely poor choice. In remarks published on March 13th, 27th, Repossory, story Superintendent Jeff Windhorst states, and I quote, "The district would need to purchase additional land for a northern elementary site because the existing 10.3-acre Greencamp Intermediate property is too small for an elementary school that would need roughly 19 acres." Close quotes. This statement indicates Mr. Windhorst was fully aware of the Ohio School Design Manual's recommendation of nearly 20 acres for the school site that would accommodate nearly 1,000 children. These recommendations come from the Ohio Facilities Commission. Later, environmental testing confirmed the presence of contamination at Charlotte, increasing construction costs by approximately $300,000 to mitigate this pollution. The choice to build at Charlotte has also presented costs to other institutions here in North Canton. The YMCA daycare was forced to expend close to $200,000 to relocate their activities off the Charlotte site. The North Canton Library is frantically acquiring properties in an effort to create overflow parking areas for cars which had formerly used the Charlotte site. The expense to acquire the added acreage and construct a parking lot will cost upwards of $800,000. With the assistance of funds from the Hoover Foundation, it appears the North Canton Library will not directly endure these costs. Major road improvements necessitating the acquisition of more property will entail spending millions of public tax dollars in an attempt to accommodate increased traffic that will come with the school. The North Canton Historical Society is losing its facility at the Portage Street School. The North Canton Historical Society is losing its facility at the Portage Street School. Approximately ten years ago, through fundraising efforts, a hundred thousand dollars was raised to construct a new entrance to their location on Portage Street. That new entrance will be destroyed with the demolition of the school. And now we get to a question that many of us are here tonight want to ask. Why wasn't there any thought to preserving the historic Portage Street School? Preservation would have reduced costs for demolition of the building, saving tax dollars. Preservation would have left the community with a connection to its past. Preservation would have left the community with a destination for the public for future generations to enjoy and use. The National Park Service has now officially listed the Portage Street School on the National Register of Historic Places for its significant contribution to history. Please recognize the efforts of individuals who have obtained this designation for the city and save a piece of North Canton his, history. Do not send Portage Street School to a landfill. And I'll just add, I hadn't scripted that. You would think a school district, that would have been the first thing on their mind. Let's preserve our history of education here in our community. Thank you. I'll read the script if you don't mind.
Thank you all. Proof of minutes? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Both, both, uh, both of those, one and two.
Hunt?
Yes.
Greenwald?
Yep.
Roden?
Yes.
Stryeh?
Yes.
Zarco?
Yes.
Tulsa?
Uh, for finance, I have two items this evening. First, it's recommended the Treasurer's financial report for December of two thousand twenty-two be approved. And also, it's recommended that the proposed tax budget for the two thousand twenty-four fiscal year be approved.